Good morning. We are live and recording. A couple of minutes late. Thank you for your patience. It's Friday morning, January 20th. This is the continuation of the State Bar's regular meeting of January 2023. Can we start with the roll call, please?
Broughton.
Present.
Chen.
Here.
Cisneros.
Here.
De La Cruz.
Here.
Duran.
Here.
No.
Here.
Delby.
Present.
So well.
Present.
Dolings.
Tony.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Hope everyone had a good evening. Thank you for a very productive and busy day yesterday. Hoping that we will continue that, but maybe add a little bit of a quicker clip today. We have some remaining items on our agenda. I think I will just go straight into them. We went through, yep. We've got one item left on the Regulation and Discipline Committee portion of our agenda. That is a discussion regarding the State Bar's use of non-public disclosure, excuse me, non-public discipline. And for that, we have Chief Trial Counsel George Cardona to present to the board. Good morning, Mr. Cardona.
All right, good morning. So going to talk about our use of non-public discipline. So first want to start by making sure we're all talking about the same thing. So here is basically the set of resolutions that we use in OCTC to resolve disciplinary matters. And there's basically, they're kind of in increasing severity from top to bottom. And a number of these are not disciplined. And all the things that are not disciplined are non-public resolutions. And these are resolutions that we reach if we don't simply close the complaint. So many of our complaints, we simply close because there's a conclusion that there's not sufficient evidence to proceed or some other reason. These are things that we do when we believe that some action is warranted in the matter. So there's a series of things that are not disciplined. Resource letters, directional letters, warning letters, admonition letters, agreements in lieu of discipline. Those are all not disciplined. Those are all non-public. Then there's a series of things that are disciplined. Private approvals, public approvals, probation with a stayed suspension, probation with an actual suspension and disbarment. All of those are forms of discipline that we can seek. Most of those are public. The only one of the disciplinary resolutions that is non-public is a private reapproval that is entered into by stipulation among the parties prior to the filing of a notice of disciplinary charges. So that is a form of non-public discipline. What I'm going to be talking about today is kind of all of the non-public measures that we use to resolve cases, which is all of those things that are not disciplined and are non-public, as well as private approvals that are agreed to prior to the filing of a notice of disciplinary charges, which is disciplined but is non-public. So with that as kind of our terminology and what we're going to be talking about, all of these are reported on in the annual discipline report. There's two different tables. Table SR 6B is formal disciplinary outcomes, and it reports on the ones that were disciplined in the last stage. And then table SR 7B reports on specified dispositions and includes many of the things that are not disciplined but that we use to resolve cases that are reported on. So these are generally reported on. All of this was the subject of discussion in the last state audit report, the one that came out in April of 2022. And they had a useful chart there, which I've reproduced here, which goes through our non-public measures and in essence describes them. So a resource letter is basically a letter that is sent when we close a matter, typically where we don't believe there's a basis for proceeding. But rather than just closing it, we send a letter that includes resources and advice for how to avoid similar complaints in the future. So the most common circumstance of this is that in bank reportable actions, when we get a report from a bank that someone has engaged in a non-sufficient funds transaction on their client trust account, many of those we close, concluding that it's simply the result of a business practice or negligence or something that doesn't warrant discipline. Nevertheless, when we close those, we send a letter that includes resources to assist the attorney in client trust account management in the hopes that this will provide them with a mechanism for avoiding similar occurrences in the future and avoid subsequent complaints regarding client trust management. So that's our resource letter. A directional letter is basically a letter we send directing the attorney to do something in response to a complaint. So the most common situation where this, or one of the most common situations where this would occur is, for example, if we get a complaint that an attorney has failed to return a file to the client. Often, we will resolve that by sending a letter to the attorney saying, please return the file. If they do it, we're done. If they don't, then we consider whether to pursue further action. So that's a directional letter. A warning letter is basically a situation where we've concluded that one of two things. Either there is evidence sufficient for us to proceed on a relatively minor violation, and typically someone who doesn't have a prior history of discipline or other things that lead us to believe that harsher action is appropriate, we may issue a warning letter, which is not disciplined, but says, hey, look, you know, this complaint was filed. The facts appear to indicate that you engaged in this conduct. Don't do it again. If you do it again, we'll have to take harsher action. So that's basically a warning letter. An agreement in lieu of discipline is moving up one step. Rather than simply us sending a letter to the attorney saying, hey, you did this stuff. Don't do it again. This is an agreement that we would enter into with the attorney in which they would admit that they engaged in something that was a violation of the rules, typically agree to certain conditions designed to avoid future violations of the same rules for some period of time. And if they comply with the agreement over the period of time, we would then not proceed with any further disciplinary action.
George, may I interrupt you for a question on that?
Sure.
Is there a rule of thumb or a standard amount of time where the agency interacts with the respondent or the would-be respondent prior to that agreement in lieu of discipline? In other words, you know, do we say, hey, we've talked to you for the past six weeks, and now we're done? Like, how does that, how's the timing go there?
So it can vary depending on the nature of what's going on. But typically, we are required in all cases to send the attorney a letter advising them of what we are investigating and give them an opportunity to respond. So that will occur typically before a warning letter or an agreement in lieu of discipline. So there may be discussion with the attorney about whether, in fact, there was some violation of the rules or colorable evidence of some violation of the rules before we enter into these. There then typically will be, for the agreement in lieu of discipline, obviously, there will be discussion to attempt to arrive at the terms of an acceptable agreement to both sides for that agreement in lieu of discipline. For the warning letter, typically, we'll just make a decision based on our evaluation of the evidence and the attorney's response as to whether we believe a warning letter is appropriate and then issue it.
And the discussions that you just described, do they happen between an investigator and the attorney? Or an OCTC attorney and the attorney or their representative?
So the discussions in connection with the requests to the attorney for a response to the allegations are typically handled by an investigator. If we get to the stage of an agreement in lieu of discipline, typically, that'll be discussed and negotiated with the attorney.
Thank you.
And then the final one of these, a private reapproval. Again, typically entered into for a less serious form. The State Bar Court has standards for discipline that are the basic guidelines for what level of discipline is appropriate. Those guidelines typically will set a range of discipline. And sometimes that range is, for example, reapproval or probation. And those types of violations, we might choose to, in some circumstances, do a private reapproval that remains private rather than a private reapproval that is public. That is, an agreement with, if the attorney agrees and stipulates in advance, which is considered a mitigating factor under the standards, we might agree to do a stipulation for a non-public private reapproval that would be entered into off the public record before we had filed any notice of disciplinary charges. So with that as kind of our understanding of what these things are, the audit that came out last April 2022 looked at our use of non-public discipline. And, for example, had this case example, oh, sorry, sorry, didn't click. This case example, which they cited amongst others as suggesting that patterns of attorney misconduct suggest that the State Bar is overusing non-public measures. So that was kind of the facts that they looked at. They then made certain findings that are set out here, including that we had closed many cases through non-public measures but lacked clear policies on when it was appropriate for staff to use these non-public measures. And noted that all those State Bar's policies provide general guidelines for deciding. They lack the details necessary to ensure that they are implemented consistently. So with those findings, their recommendation was that the State Bar revise its policies by October 2022 to define specific criteria that describe which cases are eligible to be closed using non-public measures and which are not eligible. So we, in fact, have done that. We issued a new policy directive October 31st. Yes, going to the last day of the month in which they asked us to do it. My apologies for that. But as with all lawyers, you know, we always do things at the last minute. Sorry. But we did issue a new policy that lays out in some detail the criteria that we are asking attorneys to use, both in determining when certain offenses, when certain complaints are eligible for these types of things. In other words, we define eligibility criteria. And then we also define criteria that attorneys should use in exercising their discretion as to whether to use these or to pursue public discipline for cases that are eligible for non-public dispositions. So the details of that, we typically don't make public. Our criteria for exercise of discretion, we typically don't make public. They could provide, in effect, a roadmap for people to avoid or to avoid discipline or tailor their conduct to avoid that. But in general terms, going through each of these, so a resource letter have already defined what it is and what it includes. It must be used, and we now have a policy in place in response to another audit recommendation, that these must be used to close all bank reportable actions and all complaints alleging client trust account violations in which the respondent has been notified of the investigation. So if we conclude on the face of the complaint without investigation and without notifying the respondent that there's simply no merit, there are no facts there to support it, we wouldn't do this. But once we have notified the respondent that there is an investigation pending, if we close it in these types of cases, we do send a resource letter. In other situations, it's discretionary, and it's based on an evaluation of all the circumstances, including in particular the respondent's prior history, to determine whether there's cause for concern that we need to provide guidance as a mechanism for avoiding future misconduct. And so those are, that's the discretionary criteria we use there. Moving to our next one, directional letters. Basically, this depends on the nature of the offense. So these issues, these can issue where the only offenses that are established are ones that are amenable to being addressed by an action that can be directed by the lawyer. So, for example, as I mentioned, a letter directing them to return the file. The other common situation in which we issue these is if the complaint alleges only a failure to communicate, in which case we might send a directional letter saying, please respond to the client and address their calls regarding this topic or something along those lines. And then if that communication occurs and communication is reestablished, we would close it. So this is limited to those types of violations. It excludes violations that have resulted in significant harm to the client, to the public, or the administration of justice that cannot be remedied by the directed action. So if there's any harm beyond what could be cured by the action that we're directing them to take, we wouldn't do this. Beyond that, it's a discretionary evaluation of all the circumstances, including, again, prior history, to determine whether they're likely to comply with the direction or whether we need to do something more serious. So that's the criteria in general terms for directional letters.
George, may I interrupt again? Apologies. So in the slide previous to the one you just discussed, you'd mentioned that in response to a previous audit that your office had crafted and adopted a policy governing the situation.
It was actually the same audit. It was just another recommendation.
Just a different recommendation. I don't recall whether the board had an opportunity to review or discuss that or other policies. Is that something that we could do if we wanted to?
Yes.
Okay.
So if the disciplinary liaisons want, I can meet with them and provide them the policies and go through them. Alternatively, we could set up a closed session. I would have to talk to a lean to see. But since the policies are non-public, hopefully, it would be something that we could discuss in closed session.
Okay. That makes sense. Great. Thank you.
Right. So directional letters. Next are warning letters, which is kind of moving up a step in the hierarchy of seriousness of our response. So as I mentioned, these can be issued under our new policy. These can be issued either where the facts only establish minor violations that didn't cause significant harm to the client, public, or administration of justice, and are unlikely to result in imposition of discipline by the State Bar Court. Or where the facts establish non-minor violations, but we don't think we have enough evidence to prove those beyond clear and convincing evidence. In other words, this can also be a mechanism that we use where we have questions as to whether we would be able to succeed in a disciplinary proceeding, but we have enough facts to cause us concern that some type of warning is necessary to the lawyer in the hopes of preventing similar conduct in the future. Importantly, we don't consider offenses minor if they involve dishonesty, moral turpitude, or corruption, or if the presumed sanction under the standards is no lower than disbarment or actual suspension. So again, these are the standards that the State Bar Court uses to assess discipline. If those standards define a particular offense as having an appropriate range of discipline of actual suspension or disbarment and not anything lower, typically, that would not be a minor offense for which we would issue a warning letter. We would instead proceed to seek some form of discipline. Beyond that, again, we look at all the circumstances, including the respondent's prior history, to determine whether a warning letter is sufficient or whether we need to do something more serious. And then there's a series of requirements. Importantly, a warning letter is something, Chair Duran, to respond, to return to your question. A warning letter is something that the attorney, the respondent, who's the subject of it, can request administrative review within OCTC. So if they don't believe that the warning letter is appropriate, they can raise it up to our managers and seek review of that. And the managers will then conduct an independent review to determine whether the warning letter should remain in place. And potentially, if they can either withdraw it and say, no, we should just close it, or if they review it and decide that we should move forward, it can be rescinded and we can proceed.
Any sense of how often that administrative review is requested?
The administrative review is requested, I would say, it's not a majority of the time, but it's not infrequent.
Okay.
If that gives a sense of kind of the range.
Thanks.
So that's warning letters. Turning next to admonitions, which is something else that we have authority under the rules to do. This is basically an alternative to a warning letter, and the criteria are essentially the same. The benefit of an admonition is that there's a rule that says basically if within two years after the date of the admonition letter, State Bar Court proceeding is filed against the attorney based upon other alleged misconduct, then we can reopen the conduct that was the subject of the admonition. So typically, this will be used in the same circumstances where we would issue a warning letter, but where we have concerns about the rule of limitations running if we do need to reopen it sometime in the future. So this is essentially an alternative to a warning letter. Then we have agreements in lieu of discipline, which we've talked about before. This is also an alternative to a warning letter. It differs, as I mentioned, because it's an agreement. So typically, we'll enter into these if we believe that we need conditions that we want to have the ability to enforce compliance with. So if there's a series of conditions that we want to monitor over some period of time as a condition of basically proceeding with non-disciplinary action, we may err in favor of doing an agreement in lieu of discipline. And then non-public private approvals. We can agree to these, or our new criteria say we can agree to these only for minor violations, again, that didn't result in significant harm. And again, whether to do this as opposed to something more serious is based on an evaluation of all the circumstances, including the respondent's prior history, to determine whether this is going to be sufficient or whether we need some form of public discipline. Typically, in assessing these, we won't agree to these unless we think it's unlikely that the violation is going to result in the imposition by the State Bar Court of discipline at the level of a public reapproval or higher. So if the facts, the case law, and the standards suggest that a public reapproval or higher is likely to be imposed, we typically wouldn't do a private reapproval that is non-public, at least under our new policy. So that is, in short, an outline of our new policy and the criteria we use for imposing public discipline under that new policy. And I am happy to take any questions.
Vice Chair Dolings, go ahead.
All right. Thank you, George, for that comprehensive look. My question centers around some of our discussion we had yesterday about the Farcus report and then Robertson's recommendations. Do we currently track the demographics of individuals who are provided with any of these non-disciplinary, I guess, pathways?
I don't believe we currently track it, but we could try. We've been tracking some demographic statistics based on attorney census information and on the new information that attorneys are required to provide. So we could track these, and I talked about this with you yesterday. We'll see about trying to do that.
I don't think it's a matter for OCTC to track. I think MAD can do an analysis, because we also pull from the admissions data set that also includes race and ethnicity.
And then a follow-up question then. Are there any safeguards put into place to ensure that there's no disparate impact on, you know, different groups? And I guess processes baked into the new rules that, I guess, take into account implicit bias and some of these other issues we've talked about at the board level?
Yeah. So all of the criteria that are in place, we've tried to define objective criteria that would avoid that. You know, one of the concerns of the Farcus report was the prior complaints and the fact that there was statistical information suggesting that prior complaints had been weighted towards one demographic group as opposed to another. So we do take account of prior history, but our policy makes clear, one of the things that was put in place in response to the Farcus report was that we archived prior complaints that were closed without discipline or other action that were more than five years old, generally with a few exceptions. But so this policy does make clear that in looking back at prior history, you only look at non-archived complaints. So we've preserved that effort to wall off older complaints that may have been the subject of disparate treatment or disparate impact. So that remains in place. So we're only looking at the un-archived prior history, if that makes sense.
Yes. And then my final question, and maybe this is more a question for MAD, but do we track the recidivist rate relating to these sorts of disciplinary pathways compared to individuals who are, who actually have charges filed, go to trial, or enter some sort of like public stipulation?
Yeah. We've been talking with MAD about how to track recidivism. And I know when Ewan did her presentation on the metrics, one of those metrics was recidivism. We've talked with her about some other recidivism statistics we could do, one of which would be something along the lines of what you've suggested. I don't think we've yet worked out entirely how to do that, but that's something that I think we're looking at with MAD.
They, okay. We did do that analysis and presented it to the board, I believe, in 2017 for ALDs and warning letters. I think that the board, and we probably should have brought this up yesterday, but at another time, I think we should have a discussion about how the board wants to define recidivism. There are three different measures we've been using. One is a new complaint. Another is a complaint that goes to investigation. And another is a complaint, the new discipline, right? So there are different levels of severity. For the probation risk assessment tool that you were presented with last year, the researchers in building that tool chose, we focus on the complaint that goes to investigation. And I believe that is the measure that was in the metrics presented yesterday, but I can't quite remember. But I think that's an important decision point on recidivism. And Ruben wanted me to remind folks, MAD is the Mission Advancement and Accountability Division. You've often heard of it referred to previously as O.R.I.A. when it was part of this bigger division. But now the division and O.R.I.A. are one and the same. So we're trying to replace that language.
And that, in part, is the conversation we've been having with MAD about how to measure recidivism.
Trustee Broughton has a question.
Yes. Is there like one minute left? I don't want to ask a question early before the end of this. Never mind. I assume that these are, they come to you either by a complaint by a disgruntled client, or perhaps a bank or financial institution has notified you of some IOTA problem. So then you would have, it would go through some form of investigation that would lead you to the conclusion that you would take one of these steps.
Generally, yes.
So I'm wondering if, and sort of following up a little bit on Brandon's question, does that, how does that factor in, if at all, into our caseload analysis, our caseload data, or even the backlog? Because I assume it takes from the initial notice of you to some period of time at the end, at the very end.
Yeah.
It takes some period of months or over weeks or whatever it is. And how that factors in with all of our data that we've been keeping? And do you keep separate accounting of those? I mean, I was just wondering that.
So all of these are different forms of closures? And so the time for purposes of the backlog would run from the time we receive the complaint to the time that we close it with one of these non-public, non-disciplinary actions. So that entire time would be counted towards our 180-day goal for processing cases?
And it's also counted as a case, an active case, right?
Yes. So while the case is pending until we close it using one of these mechanisms, it would be considered a pending case.
So let's say, I don't remember the exact numbers, but you had a, you have 100 active cases. So many of those cases are going to be these types of cases where there's going to be private non-public disclosure, right?
Yes. So if we have 100, so let's say our inventory is 100 cases. Typically, we close somewhere between 50 and 60% of those in intake. The balance moves forward to investigation. Those cases that move forward to investigation, some proportion of those cases are going to be resolved in this way. Now, some proportion of the cases that are resolved in intake are also resolved this way. So some number of cases that we resolve in intake are resolved with resource letters and/or directional letters.
Right.
But beyond that, most of them are in investigation. So they would move to investigation. And then after some fact-finding period, we would decide that one of these is appropriate and then close it based on that.
Does generally happen within 180 days?
I would have to look back, but my, I believe so. In other words, most of these are resolutions that should be occurring within 180 days or if it's a complex case, within the 365 days.
Trustee Cisneros.
Thank you, George. I may have missed it. You talked about the new types of closures that was submitted by the end of October. What, if anything, changed from before to that?
So these closures were all available before that. What changed is our policy that lays out the criteria for when our staff can or should be using these. So our new policy lays out new criteria for when individuals are eligible for these types and new criteria for exercising discretion to use these types of closures when people are eligible.
Okay, but again, I didn't get the impression that there were many changes even to that criteria, maybe they were just formalized?
They were formalized, and there were some changes. In other words, we added additional criteria and limits on the use of this. So, you know, that was in response to the audits' conclusion that we were overusing these. So we added criteria that do limit the use of some of these, and should result in more cases moving forward to more public forms of discipline.
Thank you for that. Also, I have a question about, the last one, I forget the name of it, the one that actually is a form of discipline, but private discipline.
Correct, a private reapproval that is agreed to prior to the filing of a notice of disciplinary charges.
Right, I guess that, to me, just begs the question, you know, don't we feel it's in the public good to let people know about all forms of discipline? So if you could remind me, or explain further, what do you think warrants having a form of discipline that remains private? I think you described a little bit in your slide, you weren't sure there was enough evidence to make it stick, or something like that?
No, typically, we would seek, in other words, for a private reapproval, it has to be done by stipulation to the state bar court. So stipulation has to be submitted to the state bar court, in which the parties agree that there is sufficient evidence to support the charge. So this would not be an instance where we have a question about the evidence. It would be a determination that, based on all of the facts, while discipline is appropriate, there's no need for that to be public.
Why is there no need?
Yeah, so it would be a discretionary...
Wouldn't there be a need? It's discipline in some way screwed, mate.
So...
It seems like there's a screaming need, like there is on all the other things we make public.
Yeah, so, you know, the rules of procedure provide for this. They specifically provide for a private reapproval that is not public. And so it's basically a circumstance where a determination is made, and the state bar court has to sign off on that. In other words, they have to agree with the stipulation that is submitted, that while action is necessary, there's no need to make that public. In other words, the public interest in addressing the harm and ensuring that it doesn't occur again, doesn't warrant the public revelation, and this is part and parcel of the consideration that discipline is not intended to serve a punishment goal, it's intended to serve a deterrent and rehabilitative goal. And so, in circumstances where, for example, there are extensive mitigating circumstances, but nevertheless, the conduct has occurred, there may be a determination that we need discipline, and the reason we would want discipline rather than a non-disciplinary resolution is potentially, if it were to occur again, we could use that prior discipline as a, basically an aggravating factor to get more discipline in the future. So we might determine that discipline is appropriate, but that, given all of the circumstances, including mitigating factors and other things, there's no need to add to the discipline the additional kind of public reapproval, public dissemination of that discipline. Now admittedly, this is a policy choice that the rule makes to authorize this form as a type, as a discipline, but one that is not public.
Okay, I don't want to drag this out too, too long, but the only thing I heard in your last answer that sounded new was mitigating factors.
Yeah.
And I'm, but I'm still not conjuring up in my mind, maybe without an example of what mitigating factors might be, why we would have a situation where we would have discipline that was warranted. Discipline is warranted when a rule is broken, a harm is committed, something like that. Our general stance is, if harms are committed by an attorney, the public should be aware, be able to know about that. And you're still saying there's some reason why they wouldn't necessarily need to or want to be told about this in certain mitigating factors cases.
So I will postulate a hypothetical that may or may not be a good one. So let's say we have a violation of Rule 4.2, contact with a represented party. And we have clear evidence that that occurred, but given the circumstances, it was discovered quickly, it was addressed, there was no harm to the client or anybody else. And this is an attorney who's been practicing for 20 years, has never had any form of discipline imposed previously, and cooperates immediately, agrees that it occurred, apologizes, et cetera. That might be a situation where we would say, okay, there's a clear violation of a rule, it's a rule that's there for a purpose, we want to make sure this doesn't happen again, if it ever does happen again, we want to have this as precedent so we can take further action, but we don't see a need, given the relatively limited nature of the offense, the fact that there was no harm whatsoever, the fact that the attorney was cooperative, and that they had this clean prior history, we don't see the need for public opprobrium that comes with publicly disclosing the fact that we've sought discipline. So that might be an example, and I don't know if that helps or not.
For a non-attorney, it's helpful, yes. I can't say I'm well-versed in exactly all the details of even that case you just described, but I think it's helpful. I do, though, worry about the perception that the state bar would be ever not releasing discipline actions that were taken. I presume that's what, you know, the auditors and everybody else was thinking about when they pointed to this topic, and I'm not sure this mitigates that concern.
Yeah, I mean, this was clearly one of the non-public resolutions that the auditors had concern about. And I, it's, it's, it's an interesting one, because it is a non-public form of discipline, and it's the only non-public form of actual discipline.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, George, thank you. Jose, trustee Sewell.
George, thanks for the presentation, and my line of question, I think, is going to go back, and I think it's probably somewhat inextricably entwined with a lot of what other members of the board have already sort of asked, but I want to talk a little bit more about sort of patterns of practice. And I have to admit that, you know, having been on the board for probably upwards of 18 months or so, I still feel like every time we have a discussion about a discipline system, I'm still just sort of scratching the surface in terms of my knowledge of all the intricacies of everything that goes on here, so. But with that said, George, I wonder about if I am an attorney that has gotten warning letters, or directional letters, or all those sorts of things like that, and those things are piling up in my file, all right? And they are viewed separately? Each one of these cases is sort of viewed separately? When does, when does any of this sort of trigger to, you know, I may be a bad actor, you know? And, and I, and, so that's one question. And, you know, what happens at that particular juncture? Then the other, the other juncture is just, the other question is around follow-up. So if I've gotten, if I've signed an agreement in lieu, or something like that, is there, at some point in time, you know, there's some corrective actions that are sort of delineated in that? Is at some point in time, you know, members of OCTC or that, you know, is somebody going to follow up to see if some of that is, those corrective actions have taken place? Or do they have to sort of wait for the next time I violate to do something, or be charged, or complain against?
Yeah, so I'll take the second question first, and then go back to the first question. So yes, if there are corrective actions required, OCTC monitors whether those have occurred. We don't have to wait for a subsequent complaint or something along those lines, if it's conditional. In other words, if we impose conditions for corrective actions, if those corrective actions are not taken, we'll simply reopen and proceed with the, with a more serious sanction for the current complaint. Does that answer that second question?
And would more than likely that sanction be public at that point?
Yes, at that point, we would likely proceed, in other words, if they hadn't complied with the conditions of, let's say we entered into an agreement in lieu of discipline, and that agreement in lieu of discipline imposed some conditions that they had to do. If they didn't do that, we would likely then proceed with seeking discipline.
Got it, okay.
To answer your first question, so yes, our current criteria require people to look at the prior history of, at the prior complaint history of the attorney, and that includes situations in which they have received prior warning letters or other forms of non-public resolution. And our policy lays out certain criteria under which their prior history will be sufficient to view them as a bad actor for whom this type of resolution should not be available. So we do look at that, and in terms of looking at that, another recommendation from the state audit was that we develop a better mechanism for identifying patterns of prior complaints. And so, to accomplish that, MAD, going back to the acronym, MAD developed a tool for us that basically allows us to, using a software tool, run an attorney's name and pull up, run the name of any attorney who has a pending open complaint, and pull up their prior complaint history. And it categorizes those complaints into various categories, so that we can see if they have a pattern of complaints in any particular category, or type of offense over time, so that we can see if we should have concern about them being a repeat bad actor, such that we shouldn't be using one of these non-public forms of resolution.
And George, when that happens, if that were to, that happens, would all of those prior, would all of that be made public? You know, this person had X number of warnings, they had, you know, warning letters, et cetera, et cetera?
No, typically not. In other words, the non-public resolutions that occurred previously typically would remain non-public, but that would cause us to take potentially public action on the current complaint.
Got it. I guess I would just say, you know, given the criticism that we've been receiving, you know, and that we are, you know, attempting to reform, you know, our discipline system, as well as in terms of our sort of public safety sort of aspects to the work that we're doing, I too have just sort of, just some concerns about where we're drawing the line between, you know, what remains private and what becomes public in terms of complaints and those sorts of things like that. And so I appreciate the fact that this has been brought forward, and I want to think a lot more about this, because it does seem to me, maybe, I think it's going up the chain a little bit more, that there should be more that's made public than what's being made public at this particular point in time.
And I think, well, go ahead.
George, I'm not sure I'm recalling this correctly, but I, my understanding is that we are an outlier in terms of our use, our different types of private measures, I'm not going to even call them private discipline, the warning letters, the directional letters. My understanding is, most other attorney licensing agencies do not have this many options, and I do know for a fact that in the DCA boards, there is not the concept of private discipline. So my, and you can correct anything I've said that's incorrect, but I just wonder if because of those facts, and the audit findings, and sort of this discussion here today, it would make sense for the discipline liaisons that you work with to really kind of dig into this issue and bring back some recommendations to the full board at a certain point in time?
I mean, I would, I'm looking at the discipline liaisons to see whether they think that's, I personally think that's a good idea. I'd also be interested in learning a little bit about the history of when, and this may go back decades, when the state bar first started using these forms of disciplines that we're talking about, that, you know, that are raising these questions. Was there some statutory direction that we were relying on? Was there, you know, was there some interest groups, an attorney group? Like, the genesis would be helpful, just because I'm a history buff, and I see trustee Broden raised his hand.
Yeah, if I'm not mistaken, I think judges go through the same type of private reapproval kind of process.
You're speaking to your mic.
From them, I don't know.
Yeah.
So it goes back, it goes back quite a ways. I know it goes back to at least 2006. I would have to look back to see how much further back it goes. And many of these are recognized in various statutes, so there are references to some of these different forms in various statutes, and I could pull that together as well, that's actually outlined in our policy. So I would be happy to discuss that and go through that with the disciplinary liaisons, and then potentially come back to the board.
Great, thank you. Mr. Tony.
I really appreciate this presentation, a great deal, and it's one that I've been looking forward to for quite a while, so thank you very much, George. The discussion reminds me that discipline is as much an art as a science, but also as much of a science as art. And part of the, what I view as progress in looking at this report is the fact that there are now limitations placed that are, you know, relatively clear here, on the use of the private actions. That, from my understanding, is that a private action can never be used for a serious offense, basically, or something which, you know, seems serious. So that, that I appreciate and get. I like the resource letters, and because the resource letters, it sounds like there are now attorneys who are receiving some information and some notification that there had been a complaint filed against them, where before, my understanding was that if a complaint is closed, the 50 or 60% of the complaints that are closed, because there wasn't enough merit or what have you, that, or it wasn't under the jurisdiction, various reasons, that the attorneys who had the complaint filed against them never got notice.
So, so that remains the case? In other words, we don't issue resource letters if the attorney has not received notice of the complaint? So in other words, if we simply straight-close them...
Okay.
We, we don't give notice, and that's the result of a number of things. This was based in part on discussions with attorney groups, there can be collateral consequences if we notify someone of a complaint that we've decided simply has no merit whatsoever. It can affect things like malpractice insurance and other things.
Okay. Since this is a discussion item, we're not taking action today, and part of the discussion today will, you know, impact discussions we have later. I want that to be an issue of future discussion, because I believe there is value to someone receiving a letter saying, "There was a complaint filed against you, but it was closed after investigation due to," you know, whatever. Because I think that, A, I think people have the right to know when someone is complaining against them, and I think that, you know, even if you get a couple of these, and, I'm just imagining, I'm a professional, I get a letter, even one letter, saying there was a complaint, it'll make me think, gosh, maybe I should improve my communications with my clients, maybe I should go the extra step, X, Y, and Z. So, back to your statement of the preventative, one of the goals of this whole system is preventative. I'd like to think that, just knowing that there was a complaint, I always want to know when there are complaints against me. I find it useful, and it makes me think and be reflective. So that, that's just one thing we can talk about later. I, and what I'm hoping, these, you know, private actions, and I'm not calling them all discipline, because they're not all discipline, but these private actions, what I'm, I am fine, and I'm hoping this is, for minor procedural oversights, okay? I'm fine, okay? You know, some of the things you've described, you know, someone made, you know, made a minor mistake, quickly corrected, I don't have a big issue. What I have an issue is, you know, serious procedural issues that basically question the integrity, like lying, okay? Like, straight-out lying, deception, those, you know, those types of things. And material, what I mean is financial malfeasance, stealing money is the short way of saying it, okay? When it comes to stealing money, I think people are supposed to be punished for that. I don't know about this rehabilitation, and, you know, that's all good, we want that to happen. I don't know about this rehabilitation and, you know, that's all good, we want that to happen. But I think, I think professionals who use and abuse their knowledge and, you know, specialized knowledge to take advantage and steal money from people should be punished. I'm just letting you know. I believe in punishment when money is being stolen and people are being taken advantage of. And so I agree with my earlier colleagues who really question the category called private reapproval. Given that by that time, they're, the, you know, your, you know, department, your team has determined that there's something pretty serious, substantial going on here, okay? And I will note that labeling is important. And a private reapproval, which is, falls into the public disclosure category. I have a hard time understanding, a private reapproval that's public is a public reapproval, I'm sorry. But it's like, you know, it's, you know, you can call it what you want, but that's what it is. I also don't like the idea of a disciplinary measure, of which part of the private approvals, any disciplinary measure, I agree, should be made public. Like I said, I'm flexible on some of the more minor procedural in which, you know, the harm is quite limited and, you know, so. Anyway, we, you know, we will have further discussions. That's, those are my thoughts and comments. And yes, I want to respond to Chair Duran as a discipline liaison, speaking for myself. I'm very interested in working with George and I think it's, is it Greg? That's also, there are two of us, I think it's Greg. I certainly would be willing to work with both of them to look closer at this.
We will, we will make sure the discipline liaisons get something set up with George as soon as your schedules allow. Thank you, all three of you for your anticipated work on that. And thank you, George, for enlightening presentation and discussion and for the back and forth with the trustees. Are there any other trustees who have a comment or a question on the presentation? We look forward to getting some of these answers to the, to the questions. Okay, let's move on in our agenda. I believe we are in the 700 series now. I've got three different agendas up on my screen, sorry. Okay, this will, if you attended the finance committee meeting yesterday, which was robust and enlightening, trustee Solwell, thank you for your leadership on that committee. We gave you a preview of our next item, which is 701, a discussion of the state bar budget for 2023. It looks like Ms. Montoya Chico has joined us, good morning.
Good morning. Are you ready to go?
Yes, please.
Okay. Also with me is Justin, you were asking to join us, he's the finance manager in our office of finance and he'll help me with a little bit of the discussion that we're, that we're gonna do today. I'm gonna present, I have a brief presentation, so I'll show my screen and please let me know once we see it.
We can see it, Ariselli.
Okay, thanks, Lea. So I'll start off with, you know, the discussion of the 2023 budget and this will really focus entirely on the general fund. We've had two prior finance committee meetings, one in the sixth and one yesterday. And there was, there was some asks that came out of that. And then this is all really relating to the general fund budget. So I'll have Justin cover the first part, part of this slide really quick. And then I'll give a refresher of kind of where we are today.
This is in response to trustee Noel had a question on the use of reserves. And our reserve policy calls for us to have a minimum 17%, which is two months' worth of operating expenses. The maximum is 30%, which is about three and a half months. In order to achieve a 17% reserve balance this year, we would have to set the general fund budget to $86 million. So that's the level of spending that we would need to achieve in order to get a 17% reserve. The last time that the bar had an $86 million expenditures in the general fund was the 2017, 2018 year. So it's been several years since we did that. And just as a piece of information, if you use the Bureau of Labor Statistics inflation calculator, $86 million in 2018 is $103 million today. So just to keep up with inflation, we would be setting the budget at higher than any of the scenarios that you're about to see. The reserve policy also calls for the board to strive, when they aren't able to achieve the 17% minimum, to strive to achieve that minimum within five years. And so we will try and do that going forward, but without a fee increase, that's, as you can see, that's going to be very difficult to achieve.
But thanks, Justin, that was, that was to address Greg's, Greg's question from yesterday. So where are we today? We, as I mentioned, we've had two prior finance committee meetings and we were directed to present, you know, several scenarios that incorporated different, different use of reserves in the general fund. Right? So our reserve is projected based on preliminary numbers, since we have not closed our books for 2022 yet, to end at around 10, 10 million. So we developed three, three scenarios. One was what I'm going to call, you know, the baseline now, that incorporated $5 million of reserves or about 50%. And then we were asked to develop one that had less reserve spending and one that had more reserve spending to see what those would look like, to see where we could cut costs or where we would need to additionally fund, where we could fund more, more expenditures that we, that we needed to incur. Yesterday, we presented these three scenarios and I think most of the committee members, and they can certainly speak to it, were somewhere between five and eight, the eight million dollar scenario. So what we've done today, that I'll share in my next slide, is we took the eight million dollar scenario, that, you know, using reserves of $8 million and see what we could cut back from that to try to get somewhere between five, five and eight million dollar use of reserves in the general fund. Keeping in mind that, you know, preliminary projected ending is around $10 million for 2022. So this, this is where we are today, this is what I'm calling the revised budget. And we were able to cut it down to about six and a half million. So like I mentioned, you know, we took the eight million dollar scenario, which had, you know, some key assumptions such as, you know, funding the newly negotiated COLA that we just negotiated with the union for 2023. We had some funding in there for additional funding for the 2020, 2201 program. We had some IT, IT core product, core operation projects funded as well as some limited funding for additional items. We had a board travel, we reduced it to four times per year, sub-entities to two times per year, except Jenny. And then some staff travel and some other budget items for training and communications. So those were some of the key assumptions that were incorporated into the eight million dollar scenario. So in order to get it lower, these are the three items that we looked at yesterday that were able to further cut so that we can get our reserve spending lower. So one is, it's in the eight dollar, eight million dollar scenario, we had budgeted a full year of the San Francisco building operations. However, we've now cut it down to nine months. And that's obviously with anticipation that we will sell the building in the second part of 2023. You know, yes, this is hypothetical, we don't know when we'll sell or for how much, but if we, we, you know, only, only budget for nine months, these, these dollars here are what we would save. Our savings or cost reductions. So in this, in this revised budget, we're only funding nine months versus a full year. We also had in, in the prior, in the eight million dollar scenario, four, we gave OCTC four new headcount, or positions. And this reduced it to only fund two of those four, so that gave us about $260,000 in savings. And for all of our open or vacant positions, we are going to apply a three-month hiring freeze to that. So that gave us an additional, close to 400, about $400,000 in savings. So in these three items that we were able to cut back or reduce, we were able to get about a million and a half in, in cost reductions, which allowed us to bring our reserve spending down from eight million to six and a half million. Which I think is roughly where people were comfortable, where the committee members were comfortable.
Ariselli, I wanted to make sure it was clear that the finance committee sort of directed us to look in these areas. And then when George presented to the finance committee yesterday, he indicated a need for potentially only two of the four positions. So I wanted to make sure the full board knew that we've received direction input that led to these particular figures you see on the screen.
Yes, that's correct. And this is, this is the budget where we are, where we are today, so. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Just a reminder to the trustees, this is a presentation only, there won't be any action here. But certainly now is the time to ask questions, to verify assumptions, to double check. Arnie, maybe we'll start with you. Does this, does this comport with what you understood coming out of your budget committee meeting yesterday?
It does, and I, I appreciate the staff turning this around, Ariselli and her team and others, turning this around so quickly. Yeah, I, I also want to allow for and my other finance committee members, I see Mr. Noel has his hand up, but also Mr. Tony and Mr. Broden to weigh in on this. But trustees, our financial situation is, is, is a little, is rocky. And I, we have to, to be serious about that. And from what was, what's been presented to us over a period of time, both the general fund and our admissions fund, we are running a significant shortfall. And having, you know, the opportunity in, you know, sort of prior work experience in the legislature to work on budgets, I know that, you know, we have to look at cuts, we have to look at revenues, we have to look at doing things differently. And the approach that the finance committee took was one of trying to ensure that we stay true to our mission, trying to ensure that we honored the labor contract that we've entered into, wanting to make sure that we continue to be future-forward in terms of our thinking. And I think a lot of the, of what is funded in this budget that's been presented to you is, from an IT standpoint, is future-looking. And also wanting to make sure that we continue to focus on, on the discipline system because that's, you know, where a concentration of, of so much of, of the attention has been. And although you don't see the full funding of four positions here, one of the things that George also mentioned was that there was a need for some significant upgrades in the IT system. And IT and various IT systems that are associated with OCTC. And that is, to the best of my understanding, through this presentation, those, those funds are made available to OCTC there. I'm not into austerity budgets and don't think that we need to be thinking about this from, from that standpoint and don't want to, don't want to cut too much further or dig too much further into, into, to thinking about this from an austerity standpoint. But the other thing that was a significant discussion, and I'll let Mr. Noel and others from the finance committee pipe up about this, is that we have to set the stage and have done the due diligence to show that we need to push forward. And you'll see this in the, in the ledge presentation a little bit later on in our discussions, that we need a fee increase. And we need to begin to sort of prosecute that case with the legislature and have sort of the, the facts, the figures in the necessary, all the necessary sort of positions and, and information that we need in order to, to begin to move that discussion forward. And I think that what we've done here with this budget, in terms of at least this as an option, helps to do that. And so I don't have any additional sort of questions for, for the team, but those are the, those are the comments that I have and I, and I thank for the quick turnaround on what we just discussed yesterday.
Thank you, Arnie. Trustee Noel, please. You're on mute, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yesterday, I spent a lot of time, I think, on, on the discussion that I don't think anybody really disagreed with, that we have been asked to do a lot by the legislature. They want to watch us very carefully. And we need money to do that, budget is not in great shape. And so we need them to realize that, and I agree with Arnie and that was a lot of the discussion yesterday. However, I thought about this last night and I, I haven't heard anything about it. Now, I, I, it could have just gone right by me, but it's, it's kind of a simple question, but from March 2020 to when we started to come back or started to travel again, how much money did we save? I, I will tell you that I had, out of 50 fund accounts that I had, by the end of COVID, every single one of them had a large fund balance for a whole variety of reasons. We didn't spend the money, we were staying home, it wasn't travel, it wasn't a lot of other expenditures that normally have if you were running things the way you ran it pre-COVID. And we had to sort of realign spending projections based on that. But the one thing that was mind-blowing was the amount of money we saved. And I was just, I, I never asked that yesterday and I don't know if you've had that discussion before or, or what. Anyway.
Think it's a fair question, Greg, I'll ask Lea to respond.
And I think I'm going to turn to Justin and Ariselli. I think we know that pre-COVID, it was in excess of a million, maybe 1.2 million a year. And we, I think Justin and Ariselli have a better understanding of what's been included in the 2023 budget. I think it's maybe about 400, 500,000 for travel. Non, the, the staff, there's staff travel and then there's the committee travel that's been built into the budget. And we did go over those assumptions, are in the memo. Four in-person meetings a year for the board, two in-person meetings a year for all other sub-entities except for Jenny. And Jenny, all their meetings in person funded, however, we reduced the days from two to one for the Jenny meeting, so that is what's in the budget and finance folks can give you some numbers.
And, and we're, we're pulling up that number as we speak, but I, I will tell you that we had some savings in travel due to the COVID restrictions and the lack of travel, but we also had a lot of expenditures because we had to transition our workforce to remote working. So we had to set up a lot of people for remote working. We had to organize that, so it wasn't just a pure savings. The buildings, we still had to operate, we couldn't turn off the AC, we couldn't do those things. And we had subsidies that we had to provide employees because they're working from home now. So it wasn't as simple, you know, a reduction. There was a lot of offsets to the savings that we did achieve through travel that we had to other expenses, other places, so we didn't, maybe we didn't achieve the same savings that you did at your organization.
But that being said, if we went to zero travel as an organization, there is some number that we would be able to reduce this budget by. I think it's around half a million dollars or 400 something thousand in the 2023 budget now. I will say, you know, we're going to talk about our legislative priorities and I can't remember if this is in the, okay, it is, Donna. You know, it's really important that we get this bill extended that, or statute that allows us to meet remotely without having to post a location of members who are participating. That expires June 30th, I believe. And that will be a real problem for us and will impact our budget because people are not comfortable participating remotely if they have to post their address. And allow people to come into their homes and participate with them.
Yep, trustee Chin.
I did not listen in to the entirety of the finance committee meeting yesterday. Could folks speak to why we Could folks speak to why we are not talking more about the scenario two budget? And also what we view as, I mean, how is the legislature going to view our spending the reserves down far below where they are supposed to be at a time when we're also, as part of our legislative priorities, going to ask for a fee increase, which according to the ledge priorities document, the decision on that is going to be pushed until after the state auditor releases their report? How is it going to be perceived? I mean, is this a good idea to be talking about spend? I mean, to me, I get really worried seeing the projected reserve go down this far.
Trustee Tony might have a response, but let me, okay, go ahead. I was going to offer staff the opportunity first, but please, you're, you're a committee member. Go for it. And then Arnie.
Thank you. And trustee Chen, I appreciate the question. It's a fair question. Part of what happened that I really appreciated is that the finance committee met in early January so that we could spend time discussing the challenges and trying to come up with solutions. So what the board did is the board came with door number one, okay? And what we, I, I will tell you that my recommendation was to come back with a budget that was smaller. That was my recommendation because I share the concerns that you just stated. And there also was a discussion where some members said, you know what? Let's do that, but let's also see a budget that spends a little more because there was concern about if we can't fill these OT, I'm sorry, OCTC positions, that we're going to have a hard time meeting the mandate by the legislature to reduce the disciplinary backlog. So when we came back to the finance committee meeting yesterday, I had gone through a process myself of assessing how much we spent last year. So to give an example, and I'm doing this from memory, but it's, the numbers are pretty close. There was approximately $85 million in the budget last year for staff salaries. Now, because there was the agreement, the labor agreement of increases of 5% for the majority of employees for 2023 and 10% for a smaller number, if you just did 5% of that number alone, then, you know, it's bringing us up to, you know, 89 million and change. And if you did that and you would freeze every other category of spending, which, okay, and, and, and make the cuts you have to make. Because when you freeze spending in a high inflation, you know, set of conditions, it actually means you have to cut the things you're spending on. So even with the freeze, when I looked at it, I realized that that puts us close to number three, to, to the third option. And that to make further cuts, I was worried, would jeopardize the state bar's ability to fulfill its basic missions. And so I guess I tried to change my mind in the process in a way I did not expect because I was the original proponent of austerity budget in the finance committee discussions. So I'm just sharing with you that I went through a process when I looked at it very closely, did my own comparisons, that I concluded we needed to be closer to the third option in order to meet our very basic obligations. And that we would have to negotiate with the state legislature. I think the, the only other caveat is, you know, it'll come up later. Well, I'm going to leave it for later because it's part of the legislative. But I just wanted to share my own journey through this. And all the, all the choices are bad choices. That is, that is what the situation is. Even door number three requires significant cuts to what we're doing.
And Mark, and if, and if, and if I may time in here a little bit, thanks for highlighting all of that, Mark. Just very, very high level. You know, this is some of the issues that we are now having to deal with. You know, in my first committee, finance committee presentation, I, I had a list of key issues that we were considering even before developing any, any budget for 2023. You know, one being, we've only had one fee increase in the past 25 years, right? That, that's, that's, I think, in my opinion, I think that's, that's a problem. How can we only have one fee increase in the past 25 years? Our personnel costs, all of our costs really are increasing year over year. Personnel in particular is our most expensive cost category. We have a 5% merit salary increase that everybody gets as long as you're meeting expectations up to your, you know, up to your position cap, right? So that happens every year, 5%. This year, we have the new MOU that we negotiated where everybody got the additional 5% and some, some attorneys got 10%, right? So just that in and of itself added, it was four and a half million dollars in 2023 bar wide. But, you know, a big chunk of that is the general fund. So we are spending a lot of money on our personnel. Last time, we recently checked and for the first time, I think in the past few years, we're almost fully staffed. We're, we're in the low 90s, 90% staffed. And we don't anticipate, you know, a huge amount of employees to, we, we don't expect, you know, a significant amount of attrition that we had seen in the past couple of years, in the past few years, where we did struggle with, you know, filling our positions. Now, I think for the first time in, in a while, we, we are almost fully staffed. So all of that is adding to, you know, the, the additional use of, of reserves in the general fund. It's just not getting, getting depleted and we have nothing to build it up.
And I, I just lest Ariselli leave the impression that our salary structure is unusual. I just want to point out this, we are, have MOUs with SEIU. This is the union that represents state employees. It is standard to have 5% annual step increases in your labor contracts. The 5% COLA that we just negotiated is very consistent, if not on the lower end of COLAs that have been negotiated for other government employees recently. So I don't want to give the impression that our structure is unique or somehow sort of overly generous to our staff.
Thank you, Leah. Trustee Shelby, please.
Thank you. As, as Ariselli was talking, it just kind of hit me. A, I would love to see that document that you shared with the finance committee because as I was listening to you walk through the priorities, what really struck me was how, how do we or how have we educated legislative leadership as it relates to our budget, right? Has there been a conversation with the respective leadership that, you know, decides whether we are or are not going to get a fee increase? I mean, have we laid out or has the staff laid out kind of what the budget looks like over the last 25 years from a high level? You know, that there have only been two increases? The fact that, you know, the, the, the fact that the state bar has been, you know, working with what it has. But it just, that just kind of hit me, right? I mean, everyone is experiencing challenges, so, you know, we are not alone. And so we are going to have to make difficult decisions. But I also think it's important to educate people very clearly as it relates to how things transpire. And I don't know if that has happened. And if that's happened, I certainly don't, you know, want to assume anything, but that just struck me.
So I, I will respond from, from my own knowledge base and experience since I've been in the leadership. I mean, the conversations are ongoing and multifaceted over many different areas. I understand that, that at the staff level with legislative staff as well as our staff, that there are regular updates on where we are with our budget. It is certainly no secret that one fee increase in, in 20 something years is a difficult reality for us to face. Certainly there was quite a bit of discussion from the court to the legislative committees, to, to trustees, sitting and former of the need for that fee increase. And ultimately legislature only met us part of the way. We're certainly grateful for what we got. And, and my recollection of when that happened was, okay, let's, you know, let's see what, what, what you can do with this in terms of your legislative mandates of protecting the public, reducing the backlog, et cetera. And we are working on multiple fronts to try and meet those, those expectations, keep that, those lines of communication open. But it is, it is an ongoing process. I, I think communication, the more communication, the better. And certainly I've got several meetings on my calendar next week in Sacramento. And this will be a topic. Trustee Chen.
So just further on that, I, I still remain concerned that at a time when we're trying to get a fee increase pushed through, that if we take a step of, you know, choosing a budget option that has us spending down our general fund reserves to $3 million, the legislature could look at that as we're just forcing their hand rather than letting them make an actual decision on it. It's, we're forcing them to approve a fee increase. I mean, that could be the perception and it may not be, it, people may not look kindly on that. I mean, would we be better positioned to get a fee increase approved if we were to adopt, you know, budget scenario two? Which, you know, looking at the board materials, it looks like there, it does include assumptions of, you know, continuing to make sure we're advancing our IT infrastructure initiatives, continuing to fund DEI initiatives, continuing to, you know, pursue our mission, but really making some strong cuts. And would that send a stronger message of, look, we will continue to be fiscally responsible? And this does spend our reserve down further than it needs to be, but we're not going to cut it down to the bone such that you have to, you know, we're essentially tying your hands.
I mean, certainly a fair point. And there are no easy answers, right? I mean, so much of it's, Arnie, I, I hear you and I'll, I'll hand it over in a second. So much of this comes down to how are we as an agency? How is this body, as a group of leaders of this agency engendering trust in those relationships and ultimately producing results that are reflected in the metrics that we looked at yesterday and that we continue to look at?
I mean, so just, I mean, like, I just worry that it could be perceived as us thumbing our nose at prudent fiscal management.
And let me just say, I mean, speaking for, only for myself personally, that is just not the way I operate. And I don't believe that's the way any of the folks on this board operate, certainly. And we cannot control folks' ultimate perception. But let me be very clear, that is not the intention that I'm taking into any of the conversations that I'm having, nor do I believe it's the intention of our staff when they're having the conversation at their level. And I'll let folks speak for themselves here. Arnie, did you want to say something?
I did. And, and I, I really, this is a good discussion. This is the type of discussion actually that we had in the finance committee as well in terms of the, the back and forth with this. And I, and I'm so glad that what we decided to do was to move this forward as a discussion item and not an action item for today. And trustee Chen, here's, here's, I guess, here's all I can, here's my best way of responding to you. I don't know what the right answer is. However, here's what I know from my, my days in the legislature and sort of the precedent that that sort of serves for me. If you look at what the governor, we, we're, the, the state right now is projecting a $22.5 billion deficit, all right? The governor at this particular point in time has sort of kicked the can down the road and said, we're going to take a wait and see approach. All right. So they're going to, they're going to make the requisite decisions that they need to make probably in May. And so they have, wouldn't say it's completely business, business as usual, but they've made cuts. They've, they've done some of the things that they need to do in order to present sort of a balanced budget, but they haven't dipped into the reserves. They'll dip into the reserves if in fact, and they'll dip into the reserves substantially if, if need be. And we do that, or the state does that all the time in order to balance budgets. And so part of my thinking in all of this was to, to try to use that as some guidance in terms of how it is that we would move forward. And to use that as also sort of a foundation to show that we, there is a need. You know, if you have to look across all categories, we balance, we balance budgets using cuts. We balance budgets raising revenues. And we balance budgets doing things different, some differently, some sort of combination of all of those. And I like to think at least in terms of what we presented today, we've attempted to try to do that. It may not be necessarily the sweetest spot just yet, but we've attempted to try to do that. And so that was a long-winded way of saying to you, I'm not sure what the right answer is. But this is, I, I know that we have to put ourselves in a position where we could have a very, very serious conversation with, with staff and legislators about a fee increase.
I, I just wanted to say, you know, from, from my perspective, and I think as a staff team going into the conversation yesterday, my preference would be that we would have gone with a $5 million budget, which I keep getting the option numbers mixed up. You know, about half of the reserve. But I, I do want to point out that one of the primary differences between that $5 million budget and the larger one is the number of months of San Francisco building operations that are funded. And that is all hypothetical. It's all a projected number that we really don't know what is going to pan out. And an option that I suggested yesterday that you might want to consider is that we leave the budget, budgeted expenses for the San Francisco building at six months. That would reduce the use of the reserve. But that at the mid-year, obviously, we will come back and perhaps we schedule it before the mid-year. Where are we with the building sale in May? And if it doesn't look like the building is going to sell, then we do a budget adjustment and we address it at that time. So I, I feel that allows us to kind of give, have a little bit of breathing room, not use so much of the reserves and really not anticipate that the building is not going to sell because we don't really have any evidence to suggest it's not going to sell, just like we don't necessarily have evidence today that, that it's going to sell or when. So I don't, I don't know. I just wanted to point that out. And then I wanted to respond to Melanie's question. The last time we seriously went forward with a fee increase, there was a tremendous communications effort around that and a lot of education. What happened was we got a special audit, an audit and an LAO review. The audit and the LAO review essentially, but the audit recommended the fee increase. And that's how we ultimately got the fee increase, although it was not as much as we asked for. Last, with the last California state auditor's audit, there were, there were a number of recommendations for OCTC and we tagged some of them as fiscal, meaning we can't implement these without new money. As a result, the audit that is, we are experiencing now, the audit that is underway now is essentially looking at whether or not we need a fee increase. Because we made those assertions in our response to the audit on OCTC, now they're looking at whether or not we need a fee increase. So I do believe that even the very preliminary conversations we've had about fee increases have been couched in this understanding that there's an audit coming out in, in April. So I think, yes, we need to do our part. But in my experience, which is admittedly limited here, it's very dependent on what the auditor sees and what the auditor says. And so, so that's where we are this time around. And I've been trying to make a distinction between a fee increase that's necessary to maintain our operations versus a fee increase that's needed to increase investments in OCTC, to achieve new case processing standards, to speed things up, to address backlog, that those are actually two different things. And right now, what we really need is baseline funding for our operations while the legislature considers the SB 211 report and everything else. So that's the distinction I've been trying to make with the auditors as well.
Recall that the Legislative Analyst Office report that we discussed yesterday explicitly recognized that the level of funding for the operations of OCTC is not sufficient, right? And so I think, you know, there are possibilities for real and meaningful conversations. And as Leah just said, so much of how those conversations will depend on what the state auditor says coming up later in the spring. Any other discussion on this point? Truly, thank you for the, you know, tough conversation to have, right? But this is a reality of where we find ourselves, and we can't put our heads in the sand.
Just real quick, Mr. Chair, real quick again. To Leah's point, that additional, if we would drop from nine to go back to the six months for the San Francisco building operations, just because I don't have the numbers in front of me or I'm just not doing the math quick enough in my head, how much additional would that add to the reserve? I just can't remember.
Justin, was it?
It's 870,000 for every three months. So if we take, it's about 1.6 million we would be saving if we only budgeted six months. And to follow up on the previous discussion on travel, it's about $560,000 in travel, but most of that is committees and commissions. It's only, the budget only includes 100,000 for staff travel on the main scenario. So it's 560 bar wide, but it's only 100,000 in staff travel. Most of that is, you know, Jenny and other commissions.
Thank you, Mr. Ewart. Okay, I think we're ready to move on to item 702, which is the approval of our 2023 legislative priorities. Leah's not going to let me move on.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not sure, because we, you know, our task now is to come back with a budget for the board to adopt in February. And I just want to, what we need, I think, is are we shooting at, I think Highland is suggesting a $3 million use of reserves, are we shooting at the 6.5, shooting for the 6.5 that we outlined today? Somewhere in between? I think if we have that level of direction, we can come up with a mix of ways to get there. But I think that that is important, an important conversation for you all to have.
Jose, please.
I mean, I really much appreciate, very much appreciate this conversation. And I think the Finance Committee has done an excellent, excellent job along with staff to bring light, to light all the various opportunities. While Highland, I appreciate where you're coming from on the proposal. The one thing I also can think of in terms of a response is we do need to run this organization to do its duties as best way possible. And reserves are there for that purpose. When times are tough, when money is tight, you have reserves to be able to allow you to maintain your operations as they need to be going forward. And I think that, you know, to all the discussion we've just heard, you know, there is a conversation, and it's been going on for quite some time, that says there's just not enough revenue, fee revenue and all revenue coming in to really cover the operations both of OCTC and the rest of the organization. So I'm comfortable with using up more of the reserves, as was, I think, discussed and perhaps recommended, if that's what I'm hearing from the Finance Committee. I did think, Leah, your idea about only funding six months of the San Francisco building could make sense because what you would basically be saying is, you know, six months might be reasonable time to be able to complete the sale of an asset like that. If it's not, we clearly will see that there are reserves there that can continue to maintain the building until, if and until it does get sold. So you're just calling reserves back then as reserves and not putting it in the main line of the expected part of the budget. But I think that would, that's, you know, small compared to the overall, what is it, scenario two that takes us down to 3 million in reserves? It would boost it a little bit, but basically still allow for the operation of the state bar as we think it should, as it should rerun.
The, something I forgot to mention, we did discuss this yesterday in the Finance Committee, that the revenue projections that were used were very conservative. I think staff said that we used a flatline projection, even though we believe there will be some growth on the licensee fee revenue and then on our collections revenue. I know, as we've discussed internally, I believe that what we've estimated is low. So the other benefit of really intentionally focusing on a mid-year adjustment is not just to look at the status of the San Francisco building sale, but also our revenue at that time as well.
And I'll just reiterate for, I hope everybody's a strong understanding, a budget is merely a guesstimate in time. And I promise you, not one number in that budget is going to turn out to be exactly true. Everything in there is going to turn out to be something different. And a good organization, this one included, monitors throughout the year and makes adjustments throughout the year. And so while we might, you know, schedule a certain number of in-person meetings for this body or any of the other bodies, come the middle of the year, if things look drastically different, we could change that. And all organizations do, or if revenue turns out to be higher, then we could leave it alone.
Very good point, thank you. So what I hear Leah asking is, you know, is there a, if not a consensus on the board, at least a majority direction to pursue one of the options given? No, we're not looking for action, I understand, but you want to take the temperature of the board as you prepare for the budget special meeting later next month? And certainly, as we all prepare to go into meetings with various stakeholders. I'm hearing, I'm hearing more conservative on one end, and I'm hearing a little mid-range on the other. I don't know that I see a critical mass on one side or the other. I'm interested to hear from folks who have been quiet, like Mr. Stallings, but that'll be remedied right now.
I absolutely understand what trustee Chen is communicating to us as a board and then to stakeholders. I share in those concerns, but to me, it comes down to continuing to make the case with the excellent work of our staff, being able to fund the things that we are required to do, required to do to protect the public. And so for me, I am more comfortable going with the middle of the road. I think that's scenario one, use of reserves of 5 million, because I think it's going to help us create that stronger case for getting a fee increase and for our continued protection of the public. So I don't think there's any one good decision, but for me, that's where I would land on.
Thank you, Brandon. Don't all speak up at once. Yeah, I mean, this is clearly a very tough call. And if there is, thank you, Greg, I see you. Go ahead.
I can't imagine not agreeing with trustee Chen. I've been tearing this around for a few days now. And I think, I'm also, because I know where my appointing authority comes from, I know how they think. And I know that it is, I'm very sensitive to trying to repair the relationship or relationship with the legislature. I, on the same note, though, I think I've become convinced that what we said, I don't know if it was yesterday, but it was also last time we talked, that it could be seen as a dereliction of our duty if we don't ask for a fee increase. Because, and I think we have to do it responsibly. And I think we have to do it with the idea that we could get some champions that would, you know, come along with us on this journey. And so, I tend to agree with Mr. Vice Chair Stallings. I think we should direct staff to use a half or $5 million of the, of the reserve and show what that doesn't get us and how, if we are going to do the bidding of the legislature, because what they want is wise, they got to pay us for it. They got to help fund us so that we can do the job the way they expect it to be done. That's it.
Thank you, Greg. Arnie, your hand went up and then went down.
Yeah, I do want to say something. And I think what we've done in many respects is we've taken the scenario where we use $8 million of the reserve and we whittled it down to six and a half, using six and a half. And that was what presented to us today. And then we've taken the base, and then there's a way of, I guess, also, folks are discussing the baseline, which our cell and the team presented, which was using half the reserve. Based on what I thought I heard Justin just say and Leah's recommendation, if we were to take that six and a half million dollars and then scale back to only six months of using the, of paying for San Francisco operations, doesn't that essentially get us to where it is that we need to be? You know, puts us a little, probably a little bit over half, probably in the five-something arena. And I would just present that as maybe a place to land.
Go ahead, Leah.
That's correct.
Strikes me that we may want to schedule a closed session on the real estate negotiations item to further inform that, maybe before the special meeting or as part of the special meeting on the budget. And so I'll just make that request now. Mr. Mazur. Okay, anybody else want to add to this conversation? Yep, I'm with you, thank you. Okay, I think we're ready for the ledge priorities. And I will say, it's coming up on 11 o'clock. I'd like to just continue rolling through this meeting. If you need to get up to take a personal break, please feel free to do so. I want to make sure that we get into closed session in enough time for as many folks to be here as possible, so, thank you. Ms. Furchkowitz, Ms. Grammy, welcome.
Good morning. So we are, excuse me, we're here today to bring you the first set of legislative proposals, which we're asking for the authority to begin advocating for in the 2023 legislative session, with a couple of key exceptions, which you will pretty readily identify. These are mostly technical, less controversial proposals. We've discussed these proposals with the board's legislative liaisons in last month or early this month. And we do plan on bringing a second set of proposals forward for your consideration at the March meeting. These could include things, for example, emanating from the work of your ad hoc committee on oversight and accountability reforms, a proposal addressing the statutory limits on what information the state bar is authorized to disclose about otherwise confidential OCTC complaints in response to conversations we've been having with legislative staff, changes to some admission statutes that are emanating from the rules revision process that we're going through in admissions and other such issues. But again, that's not what we're doing today. Today, we're doing the less controversial generally items. So let's go ahead and get started with those. First, under the heading of fees and funding, as you just heard, the state bar budget, suffice it to say, is not healthy. And without reiterating the discussion that you've just had, we've had one license fee increase in the past 25 years. And we will be substantially depleting our reserves in order to make ends meet, as several of you said today. It was said at the Finance Committee yesterday and on January 6th, it would be irresponsible of us not to begin advocating for a fee increase. So that is the first legislative proposal that we are bringing before you today. There are several factors ultimately that will go into determining the amount of funding to advocate for, including the findings of the state auditor, which will be released in April. So at this time, we're just recommending that you adopt as a legislative priority, not a specific amount, but securing an increase to, an increase in the fee to support the operations of the state bar.
And on that note, you did hear in the budget, the Jenny Commission is something that supports the work of the governor. And it also, as a subentity, is the largest that we have and contains in-person meetings and therefore costs a lot of money. So one of the things that we've been working on is proposing to the governor's office that they fund, give us money to fund the Jenny Commission. So that's another part of our legislative priority that we ask, like, continue to advocate for general fund support for the Jenny Commission.
And the final one on the funding front, diversity, equity, and inclusion funding. Here, we're asking for the board's renewed support for a legislative priority that you adopted last year to ensure that additional funding is available to support the bar's important DEI initiatives. At the audit committee yesterday, the committee reviewed a draft of the 2023-2024 biennial diversity, equity, and inclusion plan. However, the analysis of the revenue that would be needed to support the goals of that plan was to be determined. And so we're not asking today for a specific amount of, for a specific amount for the board to approve for increasing the fee, but rather to approve as a legislative priority, seeking additional funding to support the state bar's external and internal DEI efforts. And to do so, as consistent with the approval last year, to do so by converting the elimination of bias part of the fee from an opt-out to a mandatory part of the fee and increasing the amount that's necessary to support the work of the DEI funding.
Can I ask a question about that? I have some vague recollection that we made it an opt-out, opt-in, whatever it is because of Keller-Brosterhouse concerns, but I could be wrong.
So, yes, in the past, that is, that is true. We have been, the recommendation that was made last year that was approved by the board was after consultation with the Office of General Counsel. Among other things, the state bar's mission, our statutory mission, as well as the mission that was adopted by the board, has, includes as our, as part of public protection, the need to increase the diversity of the profession. And so with that and other, analysis of other issues that have come up in the legal system, there was a determination that this would be, this would be appropriate to include as a mandatory fee and did not need to be an opt-out. But that is absolutely the history.
Thank you. Okay, the next category are discipline-related proposals. There are four that were proposed by the state bar court that we conferred with OCTC in our truly technical in nature. So I don't think I need to go through them, but if you have questions, I'm happy to ask, answer them. Another one, discipline-related, has to do with the CSF. The Ninth Circuit recently came down with an opinion that would require, or that would characterize payments made to CSF as dischargeable and bankruptcy. And so we proposed a statutory amendment that would clarify. It's more akin to disciplinary costs and monetary sanctions. And we have reason to believe the Ninth Circuit would then overturn its prior decision if it has that statutory clarification. And we have precedent for that. There was another case a while back that with the, that determined There was another case a while back that with the, um, that determined costs to be dischargeable, we made a similar amendment in the statute and then the Ninth Circuit overturned. So we, we have reason to believe that would happen again.
The regulatory?
Oh, regulatory, sorry. Uh, the last one on my, uh, list here is, um, on a regulatory front regarding the CTAP. Um, so to implement the CTAP, we are recommending an expansion of the bank reporting requirements, the mandatory reporting requirements banks give us. Um, and we, we, we are not proposing specific language right now. We just want to be able to move forward with, meeting with stakeholders and talking about how we can increase the information that we get from banks so that we can verify the attorney-reported information and also do some proactive regulation, possibly detect some misappropriation on our end. Um, and so we've been, we have already started conversations with the banks and others to understand, you know, the procedures, what has to happen, and make sure that what they're giving us is something that we can really use. So we're hoping to both streamline what they're already producing to us and just make it more usable for us to protect the public. So we would come back with more specific language once we've been having those discussions with stakeholders.
The final items that are included in the agenda item are under the heading of efficiencies and technical amendments. They deal with the audited timing for the submission of the report of the audited financial statement and submission deadlines for a few legislatively required reports, uh, potential elimination of some legislatively mandated reports and some technical changes relating to references to the Committee of Bar Examiners that should be changed to, um, the state bar or the Office of Admissions. Um, because they are technical, I'm not going to say more than that unless you have any questions, in which case I'm happy to answer those. As a final matter, I would just say that I misread Leah's mind before. Um, I thought she was asking if we had included in the legislative priorities agenda item, the issue about the Jenny funding. In fact, what she was asking was whether we'd included the, um, issue about, um, seeking the extension uh, or advocating, um, along with others for the extension of the change to the Bagley, uh, Bagley Keen Open Meetings Act. The reason that's not included in here is that last year, um, as part of the legislative guiding principles, um, that you all adopted, there was a provision that says that matters that affect the internal operations of the bar, that affect the bar as an employer or as a state agency subject to things such as contracting requirements or open meeting requirements, that legislation, positions on that legislation can be taken by the executive director in consultation with the board chair and vice chair.
Thank you for that clarification. Any questions on any of the legislative priority items that Bridgette and Donna have just discussed? Brandon, please.
All right, thank you for that presentation. And I just wanted to highlight some of the discussions that we've had. Uh, we being, um, Melanie, um, Bridgette, Donna to some extent, about, uh, the Jenny Commission, the important work that they do to, uh, ensure that our court systems are staffed with judicial officers. And, um, I can, just speaking from my experience in Kern County, we have a shortage of judges. Those judges are dealing with legislative mandates relating to resentencing that require an enormous amount of time and resources, both on the prosecution side and defense side. And there's this trickle-up effect to, um, the judges and whether or not we have enough judicial officers to handle those, um, new duties as well as the regular duties of, uh, pushing through criminal cases as well as civil cases that have been in backlog for some time due to COVID. So there's an incredible, uh, need for judges in California. I think the last count was there's a hundred and around, I think just under a hundred, 120 vacancies. And the governor's office has, um, you know, has, has a lot of work, uh, to do in order to fill those vacancies. And it falls upon the state bar's shoulders to conduct that very important work of investigating potential candidates and then making a recommendation to the governor's office. In my conversation with, um, different Jenny Commission members, they are surprised that, um, the general fund for the state does not provide, uh, funds for the work of Jenny. And, uh, talked to staff, uh, staff continues to attempt to educate and educate, um, Jenny Commission members. Uh, but really, um, I think if we're going to see change in this area, um, it, it falls upon each individual who is highly connected, um, with either legislate, uh, the legislature, um, or, uh, decision makers within the governor's office to continue to make that case that this is important work and it needs to be funded. We heard from, um, a state, uh, agency yesterday. And if you look at the state agency fulfilling the work of the legislature, um, that they are appropriately funded by general fund money. And I think the state bar should be in the same exact position. So I fully support, um, the legislative priorities and especially, uh, seeking the fund Jenny out of state general fund money.
Thank you, Brandon. Arnie, please.
Um, just very quickly, and I had to step away for just a second. So I, I hopefully this was not covered, uh, while, in my, uh, my absence. Um, I am supportive of the, the legislative package. Uh, but, um, we know that we have, uh, you know, roughly a third of the legislature that is, uh, that's going to be new this year. We have a new chair of the, of the Assembly Judiciary Committee. And, um, I was just wondering, Donna, Bridgette, if, if we've heard anything in terms of carryover items, uh, that may be pursued on, on behalf of, 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 of members or, uh, uh, committee chairs? Or if, uh, in fact, there may be something new on the horizon, either positive or negatively, that we may need to have to grapple with from a, from a policy standpoint in terms of, uh, what may be happening to us in the fee bill?
So, um, I think in large part, um, the answer to that may depend on the, um, results of the state audit. Um, and if there are recommendations in the, in the audit, um, what those are and whether those resonate with the legislature. Um, uh, I'd like to think that those will all be recommendations that we will find very positive and will want the legislature to, um, to grab on to. Um, but one of the other, I think one of the main, um, um, items that I'm aware of, um, that I think is a carryover, and we committed to legislative staff last year that we would work with, to help them provide language on, um, changing the, um, the, the specificity in the statute that defines what information that we can, that the state bar is authorized to disclose about otherwise confidential OCTC complaints. Um, and so that's something that we are continuing to talk to legislative staff about how to pursue that. Should we just be, um, should the state bar, uh, be engaging stakeholders, coming up with a proposal and handing that to them? Is that something we can, we can act collaboratively on? Have a, an informational hearing and have them hear from, um, from the public and to help identify what those, um, what, what kind of information should be disclosed as we balance the very, um, sort of difficult considerations on both sides of, of that coin. And that's one of the things that we, we know for certain. And that's, I had mentioned, would be something that we expected we'd be bringing a proposal back here in March on that item.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Trustee Chen.
So what, you know, we were given a presentation yesterday about the LAO's report regarding our proposed SB 211 standards. And that report included a number of questions for the legislature with respect to those, and including things such as, uh, having legislative oversight over our budget, setting aside part of the disciplinary fee to be earmarked solely for the discipline system. Are we going to develop positions on that and put, make them part of our legislative priorities?
Um, so that's a great reminder. Thank you very much. I, I do think, um, for example, that the, um, that there will, there will be some, some who are interested in pursuing the recommendation about the, um, being part of the budget process. It's actually something that has come up in the past. Um, you, uh, we've seen it in, in, um, uh, analyses by the, from the Assembly Judiciary Committee in the past. Um, so it is an issue that I expect, um, based on the LAO's recommendation is, would be one that, um, that there'd be some discussion on again. Um, so yes, so ultimately, I think that is, um, that is something that we would want to have a formal position on. Um, I know Mr. Tony talked a little bit about that yesterday in the finance committee. Um, and so, uh, as we get some more information on, uh, the interest in that, um, then that's something that we could bring back. When it came up a couple of years ago, um, when the legislature recommended it, um, the governor, um, I think the governor issued a signing statement on the fee bill, if memory serves, that indicated that, that they weren't particularly interested in, um, in, uh, bringing us under the, um, under the, the legislative budget process at the time. Um, but, right, it's all at the time. And so those are conversations that would need to happen again.
And I think on the broader set of SB 211, um, questions for the legislature, I think the early indication Donna and Bridgette received is that, um, staff, leg staff had been briefed by both, I think, the LAO and the auditor, um, on, on the report. And I think our understanding and expectation is that we will have conversations at our staff level. Ruben will engage in conversations with the chairs over the course of this next couple of months. And that will inform any updated ledge priorities that come back in March, as Donna mentioned, at the more substantive proposals coming forward to the board in March.
Great, thank you. Any more questions? Mr. Tony?
Thank you. Um, a couple of things, and these have to do with the, uh, fee increase issue. So one is I, um, I would like to consider changing the framing of the fee increase because it seems, my perception is that when we ask for a fee increase on an annual basis, it frames the discussion as, well, does the state bar deserve a fee increase? And I think that when it's framed in that manner, it, it places us at a disadvantage, okay, for many reasons. What I'd like us to consider is a proposal that says, um, a bill that says that the, um, state bar, the, the fee of the state bar should be adjusted annually in, um, um, alignment with salary increases. Salary is, this is not an exaggeration, 90% of the general uh, fund expenses, a full 90%. And so that would take into account the step increases, COLAs, okay? However, it's written, okay? But, but I, I really think we should be asking for something that is structural rather than, because then what that does is that frames the discussion. And for someone to say, I don't think that's a good idea, then there, then, then the question is, you know, it, it becomes a lot, how does the state bar meet its obligation to its employees without an increase that corresponds? The, the, there are ways to do that. And one is to leave empty positions unfilled, to reduce staff, the number of staff. It then begs the question, how, because the majority of the staff is employed in the discipline system, how does the state bar, how can the state bar be reasonably expected to decrease the disciplinary backlog when the staff is being reduced? So I, I, I would like to ask staff to consider changing the framing of the discussion, asking for something that is structural so that we are not in the position of asking annually. And the, the, the idea that the state bar has only been deserving of an increase once or twice in 25 years, which, which, whichever, it almost doesn't matter. Okay? As opposed to any state agency has to meet its obligations to its employees, its number one expense that's required. So that's, that's thought number one. Thought number two, which is to respond to Trustee Chen's question about the Legislative Analyst Office report. Uh, you, for myself, I would like the bar to consider embracing the proposal to have the state bar budget go through the budgetary process and be approved by the legislature. And I'll tell you the reason. Because I deal, um, a lot in my day job with the California Public Utilities Commission. They have some similarities as a regulatory agency in that they are funded through regulatory fees. Okay, that's basically the model we have here. The, uh, you know, entities being regulated pay a fee. That's what, you know, the fee is. And it goes through, the CPUC budget does go through the, um, budgetary process. Couple of things happen. One is that the legislature, um, that, that it's, it's, it's a form of increased accountability. And I think that the bar should welcome increased legislative oversight. What it also does is that it creates a greater connection between legislative mandate and the, um, the budget. So for instance, any bill that is introduced by legislator to ask the CPUC to do X, Y, and Z, whatever it is, requires as part of the process, a fiscal note. It will take five additional, um, staff, two addition, you know, you know, program staff, two additional administrative law judges and, you know, uh, one expert to be hired to do it. And the fiscal note has a dollar figure. And what that means is that when a bill gets passed, the legislators are adopting, in fact, the funding.
There's a price tag on it.
Exactly.
Right.
And it is my understanding that that is, that is not happening in our current process where the only thing on the table is the fee. And so those, you know, I know this is for discussion. We're not making a decision. But I did want to share the thinking that I've been giving to this issue based upon experience that I have with a somewhat parallel agency, at least when it comes to, uh, regulatory responsibilities.
Thank, thank you, Mark. I, I think I understand both of the points that you're making. And I think that they do merit discussion, uh, by, by the board. I think to make that discussion, uh, productive and fruitful, we should probably, um, ask the legislative liaison group to work with Donna and Bridgette on each of these so that we can come back to you with the contours of either a proposal or further discussion so that the board can be properly prepared to do that, um, in time for our March meeting, hopefully. Just going to add some more stuff on the plate, folks.
Yeah, so Bridgette and I are, are already engaging in some background research that we would be able to, in fact, bring to the legislative liaisons on this topic.
Great, thank you. Any other, did you want to add something?
Just that we have, uh, pursued, uh, getting an annual automatic increase. And it was, uh, flatly rejected. I believe that was just last year. The, uh, response was that would, um, eliminate our, you know, this really important way that we oversee the bar. If we gave you an automatic annual increase tied, I think we, uh, said to CPI. But that doesn't mean we can't try again and in a new way, but I did just want to share that.
Yep, I agree. Okay, any other questions on the, Mr. Solwell?
Just to go down the, the road that Mr. Tony was going down, just a little bit on the, uh, on the LAO recommendation, uh, I would just also ask staff if we could get that clarified a little bit more uh, around the budget, because it's interesting. Because there, there are two ways to actually, uh, to go about this. There, there is a way where, um, as Mr. Tony was sort of expressing that they, you know, members, various members could, legislative members could introduce bills and those bills would, would, uh, introduce bills, and those bills would, would, policy bills that would find them like, like what we're, what we are literally have before us today, in terms of this ledge, legislative presentation, would that all be in one bill? Or could multiple members actually introduce bills, and those bills go through the legislative process, some of them having price tags, and, and heading to an appropriations committee, some of them just sort of working their way through the process? And everything else, budgetary, goes through the Budget Committee? And is that, is that the recommendation that, that they're making? And so, I, I would like a little bit more clarity about exactly what it is that the LAO is, is recommending in, in their, in their report.
Good point, thank you, Arnie. Okay, can I add a motion to approve these legislative priorities as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Noel, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Shelby. Can I have the roll call, please?
Bratton?
Aye.
Chen?
Yes.
Snarrow?
Aye.
Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Shelby?
Aye.
Solow?
Aye.
Stallings?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Duran?
Aye.
Ten ayes, zero nays, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. The next item on our agenda is 704, a progress update on the strategic plan.
Okay, and I'm going to be very brief. I'd like to promote Kevin in the waiting room. So, this item really provides the board with an update on, as it says, strategic plan implementation. And importantly, it provides you with the operational plans that support actual on-the-ground implementation of the strategic plan. Right now, the operational plans are in sort of physical format. As I indicate in the item, we will add them to the online version of the strategic plan. So, what I, what I just wanted to do quickly, I think the agenda item is fairly self-explanatory about both the steps we intend to take to achieve the board's strategic goals, as well as what we've accomplished through quarter four. I did want to put up on the screen Attachment C of the item, and I'm going to ask Kevin, an analyst in MAD, to very briefly, like, three minutes or less, walk you through this smart sheet tool, because we will be providing the board with links, so that at any time, you can sort of keep track of where we are. So, there are two strategic operational plans, as indicated in the report. One, which we have up here, is the core operational plan. These are items that we've identified. I would call them infrastructure-related. They're not directly and specifically tied to strategic plan objectives. This is HR, finance, IT. They obviously support our ability to get anything done as an organization. The next one, if you can scroll down, Louisa, is the strategic operational plan. These operational activities tie very directly to the strategic plan that the board adopted. So, you can see here that we have achieved most, but not all, of our operational objectives for quarter four, through quarter four of 2022, with respect to both the core and strategic operational plans. I'm going to ask Kevin if he can very briefly walk you through how you will be able to access links that will give you sort of the ability to monitor our progress in real time. So, Kevin, welcome.
Hi, thank you for the introduction. Yes, my name is Kevin Tomte. I work with MAD. So, one of the projects I'd been tasked with, working with some of the other divisions on, was to develop these dashboards that you see here in this attachment. So, the one thing I'd like to note is how it's been set up, is we have an underlying sheet that has all of the projects laid out in both of these operational plans, and that feeds into ultimately the visuals that you're able to see here. So, the links, as Leah mentioned, they are accessible, I believe, after the meeting or sometime. You will all have a chance to be able to access what is currently live through the smart sheet service. So, this will allow you at any time to go in, see just what projects we're reporting on, and then also kind of understand the breakouts by the teams, as well as the overall objectives. So, for the strategic plan, we have the four goals that all of the projects kind of fall under. And for the core plan, we have all of the strategies that are being used to kind of help support the State Bar and the organization itself. So, you'll all have the opportunity to go through. And then, the other thing I'd like to mention is that, at any point, if you would like to just have a walkthrough of how this works, or to understand the underlying process a little bit more, I'm more than open to walk through with any one of you at a different time, to just go through and explain the process, and so you can understand a little bit more about this dashboard in itself. But I will continue to make revisions as time goes on. And yeah, thank you for your time.
Kevin, I, can you share your screen quickly, just so they can see?
That probably would be the best thing to do, yes. So, here is what the sheet itself will look in the platform. So, compared to what you just saw in Attachment C, this is a little bit more updated, and this is accurate and reflective of the Q4 2022 period. So, the only other thing I'm going to mention here is how we are currently looking at it and using this, is in each of these quarterly reports, it'll be looking back at the previous. So, the reporting period, for example, here, is for Q4 2022. And you'll also be able to see the status of projects from the previous period from before that. And then, other than that, the one thing to note is, we also have something called in-progress delayed. So, this is projects that are still considered in progress, in this case, from Q4 2022. And you can understand why these are considered still in progress. There is a section here on the right that gives you comments on each of these specific projects, as well as what that project is. So, you can understand a little bit better why there may be a delay, or just what's going on with that project, and what needs to be done to get it considered complete. And with that being said, I think that's about as much time as I have here. So, again, if there are any questions, please feel free to let me know, and thank you again for your time.
Thanks, Kevin. You've done a great job of pulling this together. So, at the board's leisure, I'd love for you to review the operational plan, see if there's anything that you think is missing, in particular, some initiative that you think we've discussed that is not there. And I plan to provide a formal update to the board twice a year. Okay?
Great, thank you. Any questions for staff? All right, seeing none. Thank you so much for this update on this important work. Appreciate your work.
Thank you, Mr. Tomte. If I'm not mistaken, that takes us to the end of our open session items for this meeting. At this time, I will announce the items for closed session, and we'll take a brief, a brief break, and convene back into closed session to discuss the following. Approval of minutes, and then pursuant to Government Code Section 11126 sub A, the performance evaluations of the executive director and the general counsel, Government Code Section 1126 sub A1, and 1126 sub C, a discussion regarding the audit of closed Office of Chief Trial Counsel files. We have one item of anticipated litigation under 1126 E2B small I, and approval of delegation of authority to specialty, special deputy trial counsel in connection with this proceeding. That is under the authority of Government Code Section 1126 A1, and 1126 sub C. Thank you very much, everyone. We will see you here in closed session.
We are now recording.
Okay, thank you very much. It is 2:39 in the afternoon. We are reconvening into open session after very productive and long closed session. Thank you, trustees, for your, your hard work. There is nothing to report out of that closed session, so with that, I will adjourn, and we will see you soon. Safe travels, everyone. Thank you.